We are right at seven o'clock and so I will call our meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone that's here tonight. Tonight's an exciting night as we seat our new council for the upcoming year. And we will get started. Councilmember Husnick will swear in Mayor, and then I in turn will swear in Councilmember Erickson and Councilmember Roberts, and then we will get started with our meeting. So, thank you all for being here. You are all welcome to be here for tonight's entire agenda. I understand some of you may have other plans for this evening, and so if you have other plans, you're certainly forgiven to leave right after the oaths, but always your attendance is always welcome whether you are here in person or online. So it's good to see so many faces in the room, and let's get started.
I always thought they couldn't leave. But after...
Yeah.
I'm Art A. Bain. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and support the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Mayor of the City of Forest Lake, Minnesota.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of Office of Mayor of the City of Forest Lake, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
To the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. All right. Thanks. (applause). Mayor Erickson?
I, Lee Erickson.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of Office of City Council.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of City Council.
In the City of Forest Lake, Minnesota.
In the City of Forest Lake, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
(applause). Councilmember Roberts.
And family.
It was a hard knock.
Yeah. Raise your hands. Repeat after me.
I, Lee Roberts.
I, Lee Roberts.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of Office of City Council.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of City Council.
In the City of Forest Lake, Minnesota.
In the City of Forest Lake, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
(applause). Councilmember Roberts. And family.
It was a hard knock.
Yeah. Raise your hands. Repeat after me.
I, Lee Roberts.
I, Lee Roberts.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of Office of City Council.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of City Council.
In the City of Forest Lake, Minnesota.
In the City of Forest Lake, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
(applause). Councilmember Roberts. And family.
It was a hard knock.
Yeah. Raise your hands. Repeat after me.
I, Lee Roberts.
I, Lee Roberts.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of Office of City Council.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of City Council.
In the City of Forest Lake, Minnesota.
In the City of Forest Lake, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
Congratulations. (applause). And with that, it is my pleasure to call tonight's meeting to order, and Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Valento.
Here.
Councilmember Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Roberts.
Here.
And Mayor Bain. Here. I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, we have an agenda before you this evening. I will entertain a motion to approve or any changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor by signal, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and our agenda's approved. Our first item this evening is open forum, and open forum is any interested parties' opportunity to speak on any topic of your choosing. If you are here on a specific topic, we will invite you to either speak now at this part of open forum or during the planned agenda item. And is there anybody signed up for open forum? And Charles Boltherne, related to the billboard discussion.
Mayor Bain, I'll wait until the discussion happens.
Fabulous, okay. And is there anybody else that would like to speak in open forum this evening? All right. Seeing none, we will bring conversation back to council. And council, for your consideration this evening is our consent agenda. We do have on items, on our consent agenda, items 7A through 7L. I will note, one of the items, two items on the council agenda are minutes from our previous councils, special council meeting and also regular council meeting. New council members are able to vote on those agenda items if you are comfortable. Otherwise, if you wish to abstain, you are able to do so. Just always want to point that out, this first meeting is always a little awkward because we have a changeover of council. With that, is there a motion or any changes to the consent agenda this evening?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda 7A through 7L.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and the consent agenda is approved. That brings us to our first item on our regular agenda this evening, and first is our Resolution 792303, which is a donation from Marinatha Assembly of God Church to the Forest Lake Police Department. Chief Peterson is not here this evening. Is there somebody from staff that wishes to present this agenda item?
I will, sure.
Thank you, Patrick.
Madam Mayor and City Council, we'd like to ask you to approve Resolution 01092303, a donation of $1,000 to the Marathon and Assembly of God to the Forest Lake Police Department, and with gratitude.
And I would move for approval of Resolution 192303 with gratitude. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second from Councilmember Erickson. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and our resolution is approved. Next item, similar theme, is 8B Resolution 192304, another donation for the Forest Lake Police Department. And Patrick, you want to take this one as well?
Sure. Madam Mayor and City Council, we ask that you approve Resolution 01092304, which is a donation of $50 from Joan Paulson for the Forest Lake Police Department with gratitude.
And I would move that we approve Resolution 192304. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and our resolution is approved. Next item is 8C, the egg tractor purchase approval. And Dave?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight seeking approval to purchase a new 2023 John Deere 6130R egg tractor. It would replace our 2011 John Deere tractor. This tractor is used year-round. It does ditch mowing and brush cutting, plowing in the winter. Front PTO runs snow blower as well, so it's a year-round piece of equipment that we use as well as what the plowlets are called to sack plower too. So, we were budgeted $145,000 for the purchase, and used equipment, trade-in values are just crazy right now, so that wasn't planned for, so we got a good, very good trade-in and came in about $37,000 under budget for that purchase. So, we like to be a little more accurate, but that's, it's a good thing to be that direction than the other direction. So, unless you guys have any other questions, I am here tonight just seeking approval.
So, the total cost after the trade-in, everything was about, what, $103 or so, or?
$108,246.
Okay, yeah, the math.
Other questions for Dave this evening?
Dave, I just noticed between this one and our next one that we've got a number of purchases that are significantly under budget, which is great, but also I know that our CIP is tight, and so as we are looking ahead, do we have other major purchases this year, and are we thinking that we should do an early kind of adjustment of looking ahead at some of those items to see if we've?
We currently...
If this is a common trend, it's a nice problem to have, but I just want to make sure.
It's a very nice problem to have. We have a budget that relates to all the equipment that we need. We can go back and take a look and see if there's something that we should accelerate based on the savings. We have not, all the other equipment purchases are properly budgeted for and identified, but we can always take a look and see if we can accelerate one or two or whatever, if that's an advantage to the city.
My concern was more that we, I mean, these are two nice buckets, but, and going in the right direction, my concern was more if we had others that were also, if this was a common theme, we're going to see, you know, purchase after purchase, then maybe time to do an adjustment or to look ahead, but if we think the others are more...
Right now, we'd have to, well, we'll have to have an internal discussion and see what we just, this is unusual for right now, and we'll see if that's going to continue or not, so.
I appreciate their estimates, and no one has a crystal ball, just trying to make sure we're as crisp as we can be.
Sure.
Any other questions or discussion? Otherwise, I would be looking for a motion if anyone's ready.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the 2023 John Deere 6130R tractor for $108,246.25.
There's a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Second, excellent. Any questions? All right. No further discussion? Any, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and our motion carries. Next up is the jetback combination vehicle purchase approval, and Dave, same, go ahead.
Mayor and Council, once again, I'm seeking approval for a purchase of a piece of equipment. This, this equipment would be purchased out of the sewer fund, not the general fund, so it'd come out of the enterprise fund. This is probably our most crucial piece of equipment that we have in public works for what it does and the time savings that it gives us. It's getting to an end of its life. Sometimes, some cities push it out to 15 years on this piece of equipment, but for how much, I think this is out pretty much every single day that we, well, we're not plowing snow, it's out every single day. So, for that, that's, that's kind of why we moved that one up before something bad happens to that. So, like you were saying, it came in well under the budgeted amount. When, when we were getting prices for it, the typical, what I got quoted for typical trade-in prices was $25,000, and that went to $140,000. So, we demoed two, two different manufacturers. The Vector gave $140,000, and then ABM gave, offered $100,000, so they both were relatively way over what originally was kind of quoted. So, yeah, like you said, it's a very good problem to have. I don't know how long that's going to last for, but at least for these two, that worked out very well. But yeah, any, any other questions? Otherwise, I'm just looking for approval to go ahead and make this purchase as well.
Any questions for Dave? I don't have anything further beyond my previous comments on just overall budget numbers. All right. If there's no questions, I'm ready for a motion if anyone's ready.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the 223 Vector 2100 with a aye for $399.721.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item this evening is 8E, which includes a public hearing related to electronic billboards and zoning text amendment. Abby, would you like to walk us through to start, and then we will open up for public hearing and then we'll have some conversation. Actually, open it up, we'll do initial round of questions with council, and then we'll do public hearing.
Great, thank you, Mayor Bain. Could you, Karen, pull up the screen for me, please? Thank you. The city has received a request from Charles Bolcom. He is seeking code amendments pertaining to electronic billboards. So, as noted in my staff report to you, right now, the city code would allow for electronic billboards. It's not the most clear. We've kind of got some, if you look at this and this and put it together, we allow for them. However, we have standards in them that are kind of conflicting with industry standards. So, the intent would be to align the city's standards for industry terms, local, regional standards, and to state law. So, Mr. Bolcom's specific request would be to restrict the size of billboards to 672 square feet. Right now, we restrict them to, our maximum size is 600 square feet. Allow them to have an interval rate of once every eight seconds versus currently the code allows for them once every 15 seconds, and then require approximately a 2,600, about a half-mile buffer distance between these types of billboard signs when they're in excess of 200 square feet. So, specifically, Mr. Bolcom is interested in converting the sign at I-35 and 11th Avenue Southwest. Both sides would be, are being proposed to be converted to an electronic billboard. Here is the location of our existing billboards in the city. I think actually there might be one more on the north side of I-35 that might have gotten cut off in this image. If the city would allow for this ordinance amendment to go through, any billboard in the city would be permissible to be changed to electronic unless some of those buffer distances were imposed. So, when we have a zoning amendment request, we have to look to see that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, the zoning code, and that there's a public benefit. There's no inconsistencies with the comprehensive plan. With the zoning code, we look to see that it is, fits with the general intents and regulations, consistent with the overall structure. The amendment would correct any errors of missions and doesn't create any nonconformities. Again, there's no inconsistencies with the zoning code. What staff argues, though, is that currently with the piecemeal approach of looking at just a few tweaks to the code, that we definitely have better opportunity here to maybe redefine the ordinance and rewrite it completely to be more specific and allow for the city to have more control over the electronic billboard ordinance. The general public benefit for this type of use in this city is it gives quite a bit of opportunity to businesses that might not necessarily have access to a billboard right now. So, as you know, if you look at some of our billboards along our interstates or the highway, they don't change extremely frequently. Most contracts run for weeks, months. This would allow an interval rate to change very periodically, and the more interval rate, the more opportunities for local advertising. Additionally, many local ordinances, as I noted in my staff report, do have provisions that require electronic billboards to have so much time, a minimum amount of time dedicated for public service, public safety messaging, so anything from an Amber Alert, which are direct feeds from state public safety systems, to even local advertising arts in the park, just welcome to Forest Lake, or school district nonprofits, those sorts of things. So, overall, there is a general public benefit. It does help improve overall the economic climate in the community. So, again, there's no consistency, inconsistencies with the comp plan or the zoning code, but our sign code just has inconsistencies and gaps. So, there's some public policy questions associated with this. What tonight, I think in my staff report, what staff recommends is tabling, I think at the direction of our legal counsel, it's actually to continue consideration, to give staff some time to draft an ordinance. I did want to just go through a couple of things with you, and we can come back to them if you have questions. One thing that Mr. Bolcom has proposed is this kind of public service message. He does support the inclusion of public service messaging requirements in the ordinance. He has even indicated that if this goes through, he would help work with the city to, the city, a team of staff, community leaders, to develop some guidelines and tools to help develop creative content for the city, to help implement and to develop a calendar, and then actually promote the, or, you know, help launch a program. One of the things that staff has noted to the applicant, planning commission, and council is, this is a great benefit to the city, to the community, to have that public service and safety messaging. It does come at additional resources to the organization, just more than anything, staff time. We don't have a communications program, a communications team, and so the guidance of the applicant and, would be a public benefit as well. So, lastly, there's some things that staff notes in the staff report that I would encourage you to discuss. The first thing would be, do you have opposition to electronic billboards within the community? Would you like to limit them along the I-35 corridor? Would we want to be more or less restrictive than the half-mile buffer distance? Do we want to limit the total allowance, you know, one-sided, two-sided, that sort of thing, and allowing for them to be greater than 600 square feet, more in line with the industry average? I can come back to this when there's a little bit more discussion. I'm available for questions. Mr. Bolcom is here tonight too, if you have questions for him. If the council is favorable to tabling tonight, staff has outlined a process in that we would draft an ordinance, bring it back to the planning commission for discussion, and then start a new series of hearings that would come back later this month, early and through next month, to have full, full kind of reconsideration of the more comprehensive ordinance. Council, have any questions for me?
Quick logistics question. What is the role of Planning Commission for next steps? Does, is anything go back in front of Planning Commission? Maybe you mentioned that, and I just missed it.
Yep.
Can you just talk about what happens next?
Sure. If the council's favorable to staff moving forward, staff would draft in consultation with our legal counsel and the applicant, an ordinance that would go back before the planning commission for discussion. Planning Commission would make necessary tweaks, again, based on recommendations of the council, the planning commission. They would set and hold a new hearing, make recommendation to this body who would set and hold a new hearing as well.
Other?
Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, this, I brought this up before, that it just kind of proves how far behind we are with our ordinance, sign ordinance. You know, we got to get caught, we got to get caught up with the modern technology. We ran into this with a sign for the Legion, as a matter of fact, and it was, it required variances only because it was this much off, you know, because the square 12-inch increments that they had in the sign didn't quite work out. So, it just proves that we really need to get into the sign ordinance again and get it straightened out, and so that's the only comment I'd have at the moment, so.
Thank you. Any other preliminary initial questions before we open up for public hearing, and then we'll certainly have more opportunity for feedback afterwards as well?
Just one quick question. With this particular sign being considered, how does that, in the half-mile buffer, should that go through? How many signs are we talking about along I-35 that's inside Forest Lake?
It looks like there'd be about three that would be eligible on I-35, one on Highway 8. We do have one along the I-61 corridor, just next door. The planning commission did indicate they were favorable to allowing those legal, nonconforming, so we wouldn't allow a new billboard along Highway 61. So, they weren't favorable to allowing, you know, nonconforming, existing nonconforming billboards to convert. So, it would be up to this commission, or the commission and the council, whether or not that buffer distance, you'd want more or less.
And was it, was it their recommend, was it the recommendation of Planning Commission that we not allow them at all on 61?
They did not want to see them, so currently, we would not allow a new billboard on 61, and they did not want to allow for an electronic conversion anywhere. We would not allow for a billboard today.
Correct. And the existing billboard would not be allowed to be converted under, that's their recommendation?
Correct.
Okay. Any other points of clarification? And then also, just want to make sure we, I understand, and I'll let you answer my question here in a second, but, make sure I'm understanding timeline. So, we're asking to be tabled tonight, and is that because there is an application before a council that has a time, that is time-bound?
Yep, so all...
Continued, is that right?
Continued, yeah.
That is the ask for tonight, okay.
So, all planning and zoning applications are subject to the Minnesota 60-day rule. We have to act on them within 60 days, or they are automatically approved. We have the right to extend them another 60 days in writing, if there's a specific purpose. Staff has done that, so we have 120 days total, but that's really going to give us that time for staff to work with legal counsel and the applicant to draft a new ordinance. What's going to end up happening as this comes back is we're going to look at these two things, almost separate applications in tandem. There'd be the ordinance in its own kind of thing, and after we approve that, we would probably deny Mr. Bolcom's request, so long as we were implementing his recommendations in, to the new ordinance. Does that make sense? I know it's a little choppy, but a big, so, too much information always isn't a great thing. We need to extend the 60-day. We, the reason we're continuing is to give us that time and to meet states' actual standards.
And then ultimately, the request gets denied, but then is it resubmitted and approved under the new ordinance, or is it just?
We're going to run them concurrently, and we will embed the, so long as the city is, planning commission and council is favorable to the applicant's proposals, embed them into the new ordinance. The new ordinance as adopted would then make the original application kind of moot.
Okay. Understood. And I am sure Mr. Bolcom will confirm here as soon as we open up public hearing, so. Any other questions to staff before we open public hearing, and then we'll bring conversation back to council? Okay. Perfect. With that, I will open up the public hearing for anyone wishing to speak on this matter. I'll open that now.
Good evening.
Good evening, and just your, your name for the record again, please.
You've got Charles Bolcom.
Excellent. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Floor is yours.
Thank you.
Any feedback you'd like council to consider?
You know, just two quick pieces of feedback. The word deny, it stood out to me, but it didn't mean what I thought it meant, so I'm happy about that.
Okay.
That was a chance for some humor, ma'am.
Yeah.
And the other comment I have is, I was here in front of the planning commission about a month ago, and one of my daughters said, "Dad, yes and no answers are good as well," so I'm going to try and be brief this evening, so. Yeah, I'm grateful to be here. I very much appreciate Ken and Abby and the city attorney's work in reviewing my amendment requests. Mayor Bain and council members, my name is Chuck Bolcom. I'm a owner of a small media company and have spent my career in media and advertising. The purpose of my project and my goal is to be able to convert that analog sign that you saw the photo of, to be able to put two digital displays on that sign. My original journey was to work with the city, to find the right way for this to benefit the city, and the thing that stood out to me first was the, and the reason that I filed the original text amendment was around the interval change, because that 15 seconds isn't at the industry standard of more like eight seconds. And so, that allows for, what Abby said, is more advertisers and more opportunity for for community members to participate in the sign. The reason that the text amendment got a little bit deeper around the size of the billboard and even the buffer distance. The size of the billboard, what I noticed was that the old ordinance is at about 600, it's at 600 square feet. The industry standard for these signs, most signs you see on the freeway and in many communities around the country, is a 14 by 48-foot sign, and so it's a standard that allows advertisers to create the same size creative, so it's easy for them to run in many locations. And then when we turn to this new digital technology, the manufacturers of those signs make them in a 14 by 48 size, and so if, and so that's why I had offered that text amendment item. The third thing around the buffer is that notion of, you want to have the, I think, you want to follow what other cities have done to make sure that you benefit from the technology, but that you don't have a situation maybe where it looks like Times Square out on 35 outside of Forest Lake. That was not going to be in my original request, council members and mayor, but in, in some initial meetings with the city planners, they asked about, do other cities put buffers in to be able to separate that so that there's not sign after sign that's digital, and that's why I put that in there. I have three quick comments, and I know it'll be done about the benefits. The number-one benefit of the sign is economic development. More opportunity, more shifts, if you will, for local advertisers and regional advertisers to speak to the community.
Leaders to develop some guidelines and tools to help develop creative content for the city. To help implement and to develop a calendar and then actually promote the, or you know, help launch a program. One of the things that staff has noted to the applicant, planning commission and council is this is a great benefit to the city, to the community, to have that public service and safety messaging. It does come at additional resources to the organization, just more than anything staff time. We don't have a communications program, communications team, and so the guidance of the applicant and would be a public benefit as well. So lastly, there's some things that staff notes in the staff report that I would encourage you to discuss. The first thing would be, do you have opposition to electronic billboards within the community? Would you like to limit them along the I-35 corridor? Would we want to be more or less restrictive than the half mile buffer distance? Do we want to limit the total allowance, you know, one sided, two sided, that sort of thing? And allowing for them to be greater than 600 square feet, more in line with the industry average? I can come back to this when there's a little bit more discussion. I'm available for questions. Mr. Bulcom is here tonight too, if you have questions for him. If the council is favorable to tabling tonight, staff has outlined a process in that we would draft an ordinance, bring it back to the planning commission for discussion, and then start a new series of hearings that would come back later this month, early and through next month, to have full kind of reconsideration of the more comprehensive ordinance. Council, have any questions for me?
A quick logistics question. What is the role of Planning Commission for next steps? Does, is anything go back in front of Planning Commission? Maybe you mentioned that and I just missed it. Can you just talk about what happens next?
Sure, based, if the council is favorable to staff movement board, staff would draft in consultation with our legal counsel and the applicant, an ordinance that would go back before the planning commission for discussion. Planning Commission would make necessary tweaks, again, based on recommendations of the council, the planning commission. They would set and hold a new hearing, make recommendation to this body who would set and hold a new hearing as well.
Other?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, this, I brought this up before that it just kind of proves how far behind we are with our ordinance, sign ordinance. You know, we gotta get caught, we gotta get caught up with the modern technology. We ran into this with a sign for the Legion, as a matter of fact, and it was, it required variances only because it was this much off, you know, because the square 12 inch increments that they had in the sign didn't quite work out. So it just proves that we really need to get into the sign ordinance again and get it straightened out. And so that's the only comment I'd have at the moment, so.
Thank you. Any other preliminary initial questions before we open up for public hearing? And then we'll certainly have more opportunity for feedback afterwards as well.
Just one quick question. With this particular sign being considered, how does that, in the half mile buffer, should that go through? How many signs are we talking about along I-35 that's inside Forest Lake?
Um, it looks like there'd be about three that would be eligible on I-35, one on Highway eight. We do have one along the ICE or 61 corridor, just next door. The planning commission did indicate they were favorable to allowing those legal, non-conforming, so we wouldn't allow a new billboard along Highway 61. So they weren't favorable to allowing, you know, non-conforming, existing non-conforming billboards to convert. So it would be up to this commission, or the commission and the council, whether or not that buffer distance, you'd want more or less.
And was it, was it their recommend, was it the recommendation of Planning Commission that we not allow them at all on 61?
They did not want to see them, so currently we would not allow a new billboard on 61, and they did not want to allow for an electronic conversion anywhere. We would not allow for a billboard today.
Correct, and the existing billboard would not be allowed to be converted under, that's their recommendation?
Correct.
Okay. Any other points of clarification? And then also just want to make sure we, I understand, and I'll let you answer my question here in a second, but make sure I'm understanding timeline. So we're asking to be tabled tonight, and is that because there is an application before a council that has a time, that is time bound?
Yep, so all-
Continued, is that right?
Continued, yeah.
That is the ask for tonight, okay.
So all planning and zoning applications are subject to the Minnesota 60-day rule. We have to act on them within 60 days or they are automatically approved. We have the right to extend them another 60 days in writing, if there's a specific purpose. Staff has done that, so we have 120 days total. But that's really going to give us that time for staff to work with legal counsel and the applicant to draft a new ordinance. What's going to end up happening as this comes back is we're going to look at these two things, almost separate applications in tandem. There'd be the ordinance in its own kind of thing. And after we approve that, we would probably deny Mr. Bulcom's request, so long as we were implementing his recommendations in, to the new ordinance. Does that make sense? I know it's a little choppy, but a big, so, too much information always isn't a great thing. We need to extend the 60-day. We, the reason we're continuing is to give us that time and to meet states' actual standards.
And then ultimately, the request gets denied, but then is it resubmitted and approved under the new ordinance, or is it just?
We're going to run them concurrently, and we will embed the, so long as the city is, Planning Commission and council is favorable to the applicant's proposals, embed them into the new ordinance. The new ordinance as adopted would then make the original application kind of moot.
Understood. And I am sure Mr. Bulcom will confirm here as soon as we open up public hearing. So, any other questions to staff before we open public hearing, and then we'll bring conversation back to council? Okay, perfect. With that, I will open up the public hearing for anyone wishing to speak on this matter. I'll open that now.
Good evening.
Good evening, and just your name for the record again, please.
Charles Bulcom.
Excellent, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Floor is yours. Any feedback you'd like council to consider?
You know, just two quick pieces of feedback. The word deny, it stood out to me, but it didn't mean what I thought it meant, so I'm happy about that. That was a chance for some humor. And the other comment I have is, I was here in front of the Planning Commission about a month ago, and one of my daughters said, Dad, yes and no answers are good as well, so I'm going to try and be brief this evening. Yeah, I'm grateful to be here. I very much appreciate Ken and Abby and the city attorneys' work in reviewing my amendment requests. Mayor Bane and council members, my name is Chuck Bulcom. I'm a owner of a small media company and have spent my career in media and advertising. The purpose of my project and my goal is to be able to convert that analog sign that you saw the photo of, to be able to put two digital displays on that sign. My original journey was to work with the city, to find the right way for this to benefit the city. And the thing that stood out to me first was the, and the reason that I filed the original text amendment was around the interval change, because that 15 seconds isn't at the industry standard of more like eight seconds. And so that allows for, what Abby said, is more advertisers and more opportunity for community members to participate in the sign. The reason that the text amendment got a little bit deeper around the size of the billboard and even the buffer distance. The size of the billboard, what I noticed was that the old ordinance is at about 600, it's at 600 square feet. The industry standard for these signs, most signs you see on the freeway and in many communities around the country, is a 14 by 48 foot sign. And so it's a standard that allows advertisers to create the same size creative, so it's easy for them to run in many locations. And then when we turn to this new digital technology, the manufacturers of those signs make them in a 14 by 48 size. And so if, and so that's why I had offered that text amendment item. The third thing around the buffer is that notion of you want to have the, I think, you want to follow what other cities have done, to make sure that you benefit from the technology, but that you don't have a situation maybe where it looks like Times Square out on 35, outside of Forest Lake. That was not going to be in my original request, council members and mayor. But in, in some initial meetings with the city planners, they asked about, do other cities put buffers in to be able to separate that so that there's not sign after sign that's digital? And that's why I put that in there. I have three quick comments, and I'll be done about the benefits. The number one benefit of the sign is economic development. More opportunity, more shifts, if you will, for local advertisers and regional advertisers to speak to the community. And so one of the, you know, I think the council members have a variety experiences around being business owners and digital media experience. You know, in the last 15 years, there's just less options for local advertisers. Certainly, the Yellow Pages are gone, the local paper, less opportunity around what I like to think of as opportunity to tell a story about why they should visit the local businesses. I think when you go from a static sign to this digital sign, it's just going to open up all kinds of opportunity for economic development, which means more tax dollars, which means more folks participating. And that's not to say that the local paper doesn't have a place, because it does, and these businesses in our community are using digital media. This is an awesome way to take advantage of about 75,000 cars that pass by that location every day on that major freeway. Second key benefit is, I believe, if you work with a governmental body to be able to have a marketing platform, think of a local cable franchise or a local broadcaster, and even a digital media company like this, there's really a requirement to give back to the community. And so you see it in communities that you drive through that have these digital signs. The communities are involved, and they're getting a chance to benefit from that traffic. They're getting a chance to tell the story about what's important about the local community, what's happening in the school district, the opportunity for severe weather alerts that are automated, amber alerts if they need to be there. And so one of the things that came up in our discussion was the idea that, that I really started with, with the staff was, I think there needs to be a public interest. And some of the coaching was, you know, be careful, it sounds like maybe you're bribing the city to put a board in. And I don't believe that. I grew up in the media business where media operators need to give back to the communities that they're in, and I think that the city can really benefit from that. So I'm excited about that, and that's really the second benefit. The third benefit is the citizens of Forest Lake and Washington County and the surrounding communities, because more messaging from more businesses, more messaging around what's happening in their community makes for a more informed citizenship, right? And so even if that's a commercial purpose about finding out about a sale at Menards, or it's finding out about what's happening at Culvers, or it's understanding about a local insurance company, or an event that's happening that's commercial. And then the non-commercial piece around the public benefit. Those are the keys to me, in terms of the key benefits, those three things. And so allowing for, Councilmember Husnick, as you said, to advance the sign ordinance, to allow for some of this advancement. The way that maybe the city gets that done is by following some of these industry standards around size, interval, and the other pieces. And I, and I think, you know, for me, the four legs of the stool are size, interval, buffer that's reasonable, and then the public interest piece. And I'm available in the coming weeks to work with staff to help get that to where you need to get it, if that becomes the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Are there any questions for the applicant before he steps down? Any questions? All right, thank you for being here this evening.
Excellent, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this topic this evening? Anyone else that would like to speak? Karen, anyone online?
I have no one online.
All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing and bring conversation back to council. Abby, if I understand, there are a series of questions that you would like council to consider, and are these the questions you're looking for feedback on?
Yeah, these are the same questions we asked the Planning Commission. I did not ask the Planning Commission of the opposition to electronic billboards within the community, but I think that's probably the deal breaker to everything, right? If the council isn't in support of it. And then just working through a few other ones to help provide us with some direction as we move forward with drafting the ordinance.
Excellent.
I do have them up there for you.
My recommendation is we just work through these individually, is that fine? So let's start with the first one. Does the council have opposition to electronic billboards within the community? Should we just kind of go right down the line on each one of these?
Sure, I have no opposition.
No opposition?
I don't, no.
No opposition?
No way.
No opposition, all right. I also don't have any opposition within, for electronic billboards. I would say within certain districts of the community, I would hesitate and would want more information, and certainly more community input if we were expanding the footprint, certainly to 61. We may have the day when that question comes before us. We can have that conversation at that point. I don't think that's on the table at the moment, so. All right, would council want to limit them along, which here I am going off on a second question too, limit them along the I-35 corridor? And maybe let's just go down opposite, Councilmember Roberts?
Mayor Bane, I think I meant to put, limit them to the I-35 corridor. There is option on Highway eight, and as we discussed, the non-conforming one on 61 as well.
Is there a, is the intent to include along Highway eight?
Right now, billboards are allowed along Highway eight, and so as staff was kind of starting to look at this, we would have assumed that the Highway eight one would have been eligible as well.
Okay.
But that being said, I think it, you know, if this council says, you know, really this is a kind of a tool of an interstate, then I think we'd start to probably look in that direction.
Okay. Feedback, Councilmember Roberts?
On the Highway eight, I would be fine with that corridor. It seems very somewhat interstate-like, you have the divided lane there coming in. 61, I'd be real hesitant there, if it was the right spot. I'd be maybe open to it, but, but for sure, Highway eight and 35.
Understood, Councilmember Valento?
I'm fine with Highway eight and 35.
Very good. I also am fine with Highway eight and 35, Councilmember Husnick?
I would be in favor of that also, just that I want to make sure that we have a very defined definition between billboards and signage, because there may be somebody that wants to put an electronic sign this big in front of their business someplace. So I think we need to have that discussion as part of it too, so. I, when I hear the word billboard, you know, would it fit in this room, that kind of thing? But I just want to make sure that we have a very good definition between the two.
Big color.
I would agree with Highway eight as well as 35.
And 35, okay, very good. Next question, would council want to be more or less restrictive than the approximately half mile buffer distance proposed? Feedback, unless we just continue down our path? Feedback or questions, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, I was watching the Planning Commission meeting, and I think there was quite a bit of discussion around that buffer. I think there's a lot of communities that have, you know, a variety of buffer zones. I mean, I think it makes sense to have, obviously, a buffer zone. I guess I don't have enough industry knowledge to know if half mile's the right number, but there definitely should be a buffer zone, because we don't want it to be Times Square.
To that point, maybe opportunity to pause, where did the half mile come from?
The half mile was proposed by the applicant. However, it is kind of in line with some of the ordinances that we've pulled. Some are more, some are less. I think with this, I think more than anything, if you, the commission or the council generally would like to see a buffer distance. As we keep moving forward, we'll just bring back some options and alternatives and what that means along, you know, through the corridors, I think would probably be the best approach for that. I don't know if a half mile is, is good or bad, and asking you that, I don't think is probably fair either. So I think generally, just whether or not the council's in support of a buffer of some sort, and we'll keep looking at what that means.
Okay, thank you.
Along the freeway, there, you're talking about 20 or 30 seconds between them at a half mile, right? So.
Depends on who's driving.
Yep.
I didn't want to mention that, Marah.
But point is, I, I think the half mile would be kind of the minimum for me. So just stick with the half a mile for sure.
I have, I don't have a strong opinion on whether it's a half mile or a small difference there of, I think a buffer is important. And I think then we just kind of lock ourselves into based on available mileage of that corridor. What does that mean for a number of billboard potential signs? So I would look forward to some feedback on recommendations on why, if it's half mile, why that's the right number.
I agree, I don't think I have anything more to add.
So just a follow-up question, but are we talking, just to be clear, are we talking about half mile, but you could have another one closer than a half mile, that would not be, that would be more static? It wouldn't be digital, or is this for-
Correct, this would be just a buffer distance for the electronic, changeable copy.
So then, let's say this gets approved, there'd be, so to speak, kind of a land grab, first come, first served, whoever gets those, then, I just see that maybe being a problem if we're going to limit. I guess I don't know what the difference would be, since we've already approved the static, you know, the billboards that we have, why those couldn't, why they couldn't all be digital? Are we feeling that the ones that are there, if we turn them all digital, that that would then look like a, too much of a commercial, or too much like Times Square?
I think that is why most cities will impose a buffer distance, is to just help reduce the kind of visual clutter. Billboards can be visual clutter, the changing nature of them can add more clutter. I think that's part of the reason for why they would, why cities have contemplated these. Most ordinances require a buffer distance.
So then if you're coming up the ramp, you're exiting, going northbound to the top of the ramp there, there's, I think in the past it's been Applebee's, that's really not on the interstate, would that be included in that? It's, there's no visible, you really can't see from the interstate? It's more at the top of the ramp, you're looking right at it before you go right, would that be part of this?
I'm sorry, I don't know which road you're talking about, council.
So you're come, yeah, I'm sorry, coming up the ramp on Broadway, the main, if you're going northbound, you get off, exit there to go Broadway. If you get to the top of that ramp, there's a billboard that's right across Broadway, it's all you can see when you pull into town. Would that be something that would be-
I would assume that it would, it's classified as a billboard in our, as per our zoning code, and then would be eligible if this, an ordinance like this goes through, and also would have to follow the standards. If there was one within an established buffer distance, then we'd have to look to see about whether or not it conformed to that buffer's, you know, limitation or maximum.
So on Lisa's question, original question about the number, are we talking, then this would only allow for three digital boards throughout that corridor?
Correct, there's, I believe, it could be four, you know, depending on where that fourth one go, or that first one goes in, but I think it looks like three out of the nine, I think, that are on the corridor. Nine or 11, I don't remember exactly off the top of my head. So about a third of them. I can bring back some more information about buffer distances, why buffers are imposed, why they, you know, benefits, that sort of thing of higher or lower, just to bring back for the council as we continue these discussions.
I just don't know, opening this up, how would the first applicant, like, is it, that could be-
Well, the first applicant is Mr. Bulcom, he's already submitted the application.
Right, no, and thanks for bringing this to our attention and letting us make a change, revisit this, but just how that would come across, like, and maybe there's no interest from the other billboard owners to have digital, I would think there would be, but that would be a concern, like, how do you pick and choose?
Your honor, council, if I may? So there's a couple options, you can do licensing for billboards, and so then that's one way that you can, if you, if the distance becomes a situation where because you have, you know, the 35 corridor and its maybe distance isn't the right way to do it, you can also do licensing, and so then you can pick X number of licenses. And so then if you say, generally in this quarter, we only want eight, or we only want five, you could do it via a license instead of a distance requirement as well. And then if you're looking at a model city for where they have, I believe this, the half a mile distance is White Bear. So if you're driving along 35 there, you can see that that would be sort of your distance between your electronic billboards. Now, what I can't tell you is if some of the static billboards would be eligible to be electronic billboards there, but I do know that they have a very similar ordinance to what we have been looking at.
Oh, that's helpful. Any other points of feedback, sounds like-
No, I have enough direction on that.
And it sounds like for council that there's some interest in a buffer. The question is, what is the right buffer? And am I saying this right, right? We're looking for some feedback from staff.
True, either a buffer or a maximum or something. We'll look at the different options there.
Does the state or the feds have anything to say about any of this? I mean, are they, any guidelines there?
Yes, your honor, council, yes, they do. They have some, so you can only, your maximum sequence is, I believe, six seconds. So, but industry standard is more like eight, in terms of when you, how often you can rotate your, you know, visual on your sign. And then they have some max signage, size signage, depending upon what road you're adjacent to. So if you're adjacent to federal roads, then there's certain restrictions in terms of how far off the road. All of our billboards would already meet those requirements. And then there's some, like candle wot, or, you know, lighted-
Foot candle.
Foot, there, thank you. The foot candle, so it can't be so bright that it's blinding you as you're driving, and some things like that. But those would all, we would have those in the ordinance, and generally speaking, that's not-
That was going to be my concern, that it would fed into the ordinance so that you folks know where you're coming from when it's a permit. When it's time for a permit.
Yeah, and they do, depending upon what's happening with the, what roads that we choose. I think MINDOT does require some permits, if you're on, along a MINDOT road, so 35, they would have to get, I believe I have to get a permit with MINDOT as well.
Thanks for the answer.
Our next, so next question then would be, would council want to limit total allowance per structure, two-sided, back-to-back, requiring one side to remain static? Are we, and I think you're, if I can read this right, you're just, you're just looking for other types of restrictions that council might want to consider?
Yeah, that's really, you know, the, the structure that Mr. Bulcom is looking at is a, they're not quite back-to-back, so they're kind of at a V. The structure is placed at a V, so in the city code right now, that's technically two separate signs. And so if we imposed a buffer distance, so just some of those things are things that we're trying to vet out if there's any issue. And just judging by your looks of your faces right now, you're like, why, why are we even going here? This is kind of some-
Tell us more about this V formation.
The beaten potatoes that a planning commission usually gets a little bit more involved in. The planning commission didn't want, you know, a back-to-back sign. They thought it would be one sign or a V side, as long as it was the same structure. Now, I think, Councilmember Roberts, you bring up the one, if you're northbound on 35 and you come up the approach, there's, that's a fairly large, I think that's actually maybe two separate billboards, back-to-back, but thinking about how we would manage something as large as that, because that is a very large complex of signs right there. I think more of this was, you know, did you, could you see yourselves thinking of any limitation? And it's probably getting into the weeds tonight more than anything.
Can't help myself from getting into the weeds. When you say V structure, does that mean that as you are driving, you are seeing both signs of that, sides of that sign?
No, you just, each direction sees a sign?
Southbound sees one side, northbound sees the other, but because of the construction, we count that as two?
Generally, the, and I don't, forgive me, I think I can get away with saying I'm new here for just a little bit longer. But generally speaking, most sign ordinances, when you've got a single structure and they're back-to-back, that's considered a sign as long as it's the same message on both sides.
Yes.
If it's separate messages on each side, then they're considered two signs. I don't know if that's how ours is written.
So I just have to say, unless somebody were to tell me otherwise, I don't care if it's the same message on both sides. Like, to me, that's just part of the power of the technology that would allow for that change, because the person who's driving is only seeing one. And so if the person driving northbound sees one message, and the person driving southbound sees another message, I don't care. And I don't know if our ordinance should restrict that, or count that in some way as two signs. To me, that's just part of what the technology allows us to do.
That's great to know, because right now I think our ordinance would be a little bit more restrictive. And so that's just helpful in us trying to figure that out as we're crafting that.
Other thoughts on that?
Yeah, other-
Yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's a V, that's one sign to me, and it's, you know, if I'm going northbound, I'm not seeing what's, the southbound people are seeing.
This is going to be worth a lot of discussion, I can see that. As all sign ordinances.
Other, other, are there other limitations that are related? I kind of pulled us specifically into this V formation conversation, but are there other limitations that you would like to see that we should consider? Or maybe limitations that are on the table that we would like to say, no, we're going to be more, less restrictive? Other feedback points?
I just want to make a point with that example where it says, back-to-back billboard, requiring one side to remain static. I would not want to do that.
Right, if it's electronic, allow both sides to be electronic. I would agree with that as well, other, seeing heads nod?
Yeah. Oh, that all makes sense for, for me. I think the last one would just be, as you heard, Mr. Bulcom expressed, the industry standard is four by 48. It's a 672 square foot billboard. Our code currently restricts our billboards to 600 square feet. I imagine that we have a lot of, look, permitted as 600 square feet, but might be 672 square foot billboards. Are you favorable to us changing that to that industry standard?
Yes.
I have enough direction, unless the council wants to provide any additional input. This will be coming back before Planning Commission and council in the coming months, and we'll keep you posted along the way.
Excellent, thank you. Any other points of feedback for Abby? I think we are looking for a motion tonight to continue the agenda item, is that correct?
That is correct.
So with that, I would move that council continue this agenda item?
Your honor, council, just a point of order, you'll need to continue to a date specific, so if you want to continue to the next meeting, we probably won't have anything, or if you want to continue it out to the first meeting in February, we just need to identify on the record the next date that we will be taking up this topic, specifically looking at the applicant's application, and it is gonna be a little bit hokey, but probably he'll just rescind his application once he sees that our ordinance is on, on the docket, but at this point, we have to process with that 1599 rule.
I would amend my motion to move to continue this agenda item to council's meeting on February 13th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and this agenda item is continued. Okay, with that, we'll move on to agenda item 8F, which is the Forest Lake Airport Layout Plan, and Dan.
Mayor, members of council, before you tonight is the approval of the Forest Lake Airport Layout Plan, to give you a little context of how we got here with this plan, this planning process actually started back in 2019, and we finally received the conditionally approved plan back from MnDOT, I believe in late, or early December of last year, what an airport layout plan does is that it basically guides the growth of the airport for the next anticipated 20 years, however, that number can shift either longer or shorter depending upon how the airport, these projects actually go into the ground. Some of the highlights here in this plan that is before you tonight, is that this plan does envision two runway extensions, both of them at 300 feet, I do want to make a point of clarification that the ultimate length of the runway at 3,300 feet is in the original ALP, so there was no change to the ultimate runway length, I know a couple of community members had reached out during the planning process and were concerned that we're looking at expanding it, that ultimate length stayed the same from the 2011 ALP to this one, so no change in that, what this plan does envision though is quite a bit of hangar growth expansion, you see an area up here on the northeast of the runway, that area is envisioned to be all hangars, that's just immediately south of 97, we also have an additional hangar expansion area here on the southeast side of the existing hangar area out at the airport, and then here in the middle, some additional commercial hangars, the gray area here is Hangar 97, and to the north, some additional commercial hangars are envisioned in this plan as well, we also have additional parking, so the current parking area is where my mouse is right now, that's actually envisioned to be expanded to the north, and then all of this light blue up here will be parking and road access to the new hangar spaces on the north side of the runway. From a project sequencing standpoint, a lot of these projects are gonna be sequenced based on MnDOT funding availability, all of the projects at the airport, we try to go through a capital improvement grant fund through MnDOT, right now, the Airport Commission is prioritizing maintenance activities for the runway, since we do have this new paved runway out there, want to make sure that we're prioritizing the maintenance projects as part of our grant asks out there, but they do offer expansion opportunities, so we are looking as part of our CIP over the next 20 years of bringing these projects, these expansion projects to MnDOT for, for funding, so in terms of the sequencing, a lot of that's gonna be dependent on MnDOT funding availability for the expansion projects. The Airport Commission did meet on January 4th, and they did pass a motion in support of the approval of the ALP, they did review it at that meeting and passed the motion, and once this is approved, these projects, all of these individual projects, we do have cost estimates as part of the larger master plan, kind of the descriptive document, the book that goes along with these maps, they will be entered into the 20-year financial model that we've developed for the airport, take a look at how do we fund those more on a, you know, kind of an execution standpoint, but staff is recommending approval of the Forest Lake Airport ALP, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any question council may have.
Thank you, Dan, open it up to council, council, questions related to the airport layout plan?
Dan, I have a question about process, so by approving the airport layout plan tonight, assuming we approve it tonight, what happens for individual projects, like, what's the process around approval for individual projects that might be included as part of that plan? And most specifically, I'm getting at community notification and outreach, there are times where we get feedback from residents of Clear Lake Association, for example, of just concern around airport growth, and so how do we just make sure that we are getting feedback as those projects come forward?
Sure, Mayor, one of the things that happened with project sequencing is MnDOT requires us to give them a snapshot CIP for the upcoming fiscal year, so for right now, what we're, what they basically have told us, until we get the apron expansion, which was just approved, plans and specs tonight, that was sort of like the first project they wanted done, the second project they wanted done was this little blue area here, which is an additional access to the taxiway out of the existing hangars, they wanted multiple ways to get to the runway, and then they said, based on that, then they would possibly look at some sequencing from additional hangar growth, prior to us meeting, or me meeting with MnDOT on this, it was sort of, we really didn't know how they wanted us to sequence projects, but they're prioritizing sort of those, get those pieces in place first, and then from there, look at the expansion opportunities, but when we do, anytime an expansion or runway extension would be proposed, it would go through a community would be involved, it would not just be, all of a sudden, the project comes forward of a 300-foot runway extension, but also, you know, from the community standpoint, adding 300 feet to the runway, and Sam can maybe add a little point of clarity for this, but it's not gonna allow a jet to land on there, it's more of a safety issue for the existing pilots that are there, it's not allowing larger planes, it's just, it's again, it's enhanced safety for the pilots that are taking off and landing at the airport.
Good, that's good feedback, thank you, good clarification. Any other questions related to the airport layout plan? Go ahead, council.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say that, I attended that meeting, and so I didn't really have any more comments except what Dan explained, so, and it's, and all this stuff is pretty much long-term, except the, you know, the, the short extension on the runway and the taxiway improvements there, so, also, we, on the consent agenda, we approved the bidding process, just to, right now, the tight-on area, it's all grass and you can't get in there, and if, even if you want to, and so MnDOT gave us enough money to do, what, about half of it, right, Dan, so, that was gonna be my report tonight anyways, so.
Sure. I guess I have one more point of clarification on this ALP, you see all the green areas are all existing or proposed hangar spaces, the actual, when those actually get built, those sizes are, may shift a little bit, either bigger or smaller, depending upon what the market wants, so, I don't know exactly what size Silas, the airport engineer, sized those at, but MnDOT does allow for some flexibility to say, you know, instead of putting four in there, do you want to put three, do you want to put a T-hanger up there, we're just marking that reserved for hangar space at this point for future, future expansions.
Excellent, thank you for that, any other questions or points of clarification? Seeing none, I'm, we're ready for a motion, if anyone's ready?
Well, Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve the Forest Lake Airport Layout Plan, as Dan explained it.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and motion carries. We are on to item 8G and Investment Policy Updates, Kevin?
Mayor, City Council, before you is some amendments that are being proposed in regards to the city's investment policy, with working with PMA, the city's investment advisor, advisory this, at the city this year, there's a couple of recommendations that they have altered that would enhance some of the city investments out there and be a benefit to the city's investment portfolio, so starting on page two of the investment policy, is really just in blue, and, in blue, I should point out, under yield, on number four, is really just clarifying what the state's position is with the securities that they have invested, it is the intent to the city to hold investment securities to their maturity, this maximizes the yield that the city has while also not take, avoiding taking a loss by selling those investments early, early, the city does work closely with the investment advisory, PMA, to ensure that we have sufficient funds, liquid enough, that the investments are staged appropriately, that they are maturing so they meet the cash flow requirements, so that we hopefully do not come to a situation where we need to sell those securities early, so this is really clarifying that it is the intent to hold those until maturity. The next set of changes that are being proposed is on page six, again, in blue, at the top of the page, there's just a strikeout of the percentage that can be invested at different ranges of maturity, this was just viewed as an unnecessary limitation in the investment policy, it goes back to what was mentioned before, just working with the city myself to make sure that the investments are being staggered appropriately, that there's liquid enough cash in there, and that any changes to those investments, if they are going out very far, to make sure that they're contacting myself, to make sure that there's no cash flow requirements needed by the city, and this for city reference, right now, there's only two investments that the city holds that go beyond five years, all the other ones are right, go from, range from a year to five years in staggered, where the city usually has an investment maturing about every month or two, so portfolio is staggered very well, where there are investments constantly rotating through, when I've needed some cash, I may have been able to hold investments for a while to make sure that we have cash available, and then once, for example, a tax settlement comes in, okay, we have enough liquid cash, we can invest some of those funds. The made, the big change here with working with our investment advisors again, is our current policy states that we can invest only 60% of our portfolio in government securities, and right now, our portfolio is right at that 60%, this got brought up to my attention a couple of months ago with this restriction, that the city has not been able to take advantage of some high yields that are currently in the market right now with those federal securities, and given that those are, what I can say, considered risk-free, as they're backed by the federal government, there's really no need to have a restriction on the percentage that's needed there on those securities, it's not saying that we're gonna invest all of our money in federal-backed securities, right now, we have a good mix of federal securities, we do have some broker CDs that are out there that are maturing, we kind of moved away from investing in those, and then we do have investments in municipal bonds as well, so, we do have a good balance in there when I look at our portfolio, so it's not saying we're gonna go to 100%, but by removing that percentage, we would be able to take advantage of some of those high yields right now that are currently out there. At that point, that I'll happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Kevin, council, any questions for, on changes for investment policy updates? I did just run by Kevin right before the meeting, just to confirm that the change that's proposed on number three related to government securities, that it is agencies of the federal government, and because agencies of the federal government, they're considered of the same risk type, fully backed by the federal government, and so just full transparency, I was able to confirm that with Kevin before, that was my concern, is that there, wasn't sure if there was an agency that for some reason did not have that backing, and that is not the intent of this, that these would be full federal-backed. Any other questions or points of clarification? Otherwise, I would be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed updates to the city's investment policy.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and motion carries. All right, next item is item 8H, and we have our acting mayor appointment, acting mayor is a required designation that we have within the city, and with that, I would motion that council consider and approve council member Husnick as our acting mayor for this upcoming term.
I'll second.
And there is a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose?
Obstain.
One abstention, and motion carries. All right, with that, we will move on to 8I, which are council liaison appointments, and council, before you, you should have, you have two pieces of paper, one is related to the liaison appointments, and the other is related to our commission appointments, which is our next agenda item, so first, I just want to thank you all for having an opportunity after the election cycle to sit down and meet and talk about what you would like to do in this upcoming season, so I appreciate your availability, and kind of in listening to individual interests, I'm proposing the following, typically, we look for these appointments to be a year, and certainly are, we're open to, there's times where we want stability, and we've kind of relied on stability of positions from term to term, and there's other times, it's just time to reshuffle the deck, and I'm open to either, so, I would propose this as a first step, but again, I'm open to recommendations that you might have either this evening, or as everyone is settling into new rules and schedules of what might be working, or what might not be working, so with that, my proposal and my motion would be for Airport Commission, council member Husnick to remain on the Airport Commission, council member Valento has expressed an interest to continue with the Cable Commission and some of the work that, in particular, they have coming up for this upcoming year, for the Economic Development Authority, I know this is a topic where we have a lot of passion on this board, I'm proposing that I continue on in that position as long, along with council member Husnick, and I think my commitment to this group, and has always been, is there are areas of mutual interest that we are just doing joint workshops, and so as projects are coming forward, just making sure that we've got joint workshop time between mayor, or between the council and the EDA, just so we're staying in sync as we've got some larger projects coming up in this upcoming year. Fire board, shuffling the deck just a little bit, I would invite council member Erickson and to join me on the fire board, Forest Lake School District, council member Husnick would continue on in that capacity, we have a lot of changes happening in this next year related to Parks, Trails, and Lakes Commission, and one point of just process change, we have a new ordinance to be considered, and once we have approved that new ordinance, we will be seeding that new commission, but I would look for council member Valento to take the lead, or the liaison role in that commission. Personnel committee is a informal, it's a, it's a formal, it's a committee, it's a formal committee, it meets informally and it meets as needed, I would invite council member Roberts to join me on the personnel committee, should any action be required in this upcoming year, Planning Commission asking council member Roberts to take that position, Comfort Lake, Forest Lake, Watershed District, council member Erickson, and then I would propose that I would return back to the role that I previously had on the YMCA Board. Then I am open to discussion, open to feedback, and I'll leave it to council, thoughts, motion?
If there's no other comments, I'd make a motion that we approve the, the board commission council member roles as presented.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and motion carries. All right, that would bring us to our next agenda item, which is the boards and commission appointments, before you, you have a kind of a current lay of the land on where we sit for our open seats, I am holding, I do have a number of applicants and a lot of interested parties for the updates to the park board, however, until we have approved that final position, I'm just gonna hold on doing any nominations, so you'll see that coming on an upcoming agenda, but in the meantime, I wanted to at least see where we have candidates that are slated, and kind of where we've, I've been able to have open conversation, for the EDA, we have four seats open, two seats are vacancies that existed prior to the election, and then two seats are the seats that were held previously to, by current council member Erickson and council member Roberts, I note that our EDA term is six years, and to have a conversation with somebody about a six-year term is just a little bonkers, I mean, things just don't last for six years, and so as we have opportunities to change that in the future, I would just say we might want to consider backing that off a little bit, it's a little bit easier to get someone's commitment to, the jaws just drop when I say, it's a six-year commitment, they're like, wow, all right, but with that said, we also have some portions, some smaller terms that are open because of existing seats, and those are easier to fill, and so for tonight, I would like to nominate Jeff Larson, who was a county, city council candidate, to a three-year term on the EDA, and also Jill Grindal to a three-year term on the EDA, we have two other seats open, and I'm having current conversations with about four other candidates for two seats. We have two other seats open, and I'm having current conversations with about four other candidates for two seats. So we have a good amount of interest, which is great. I expect that we'll have, I'll have two more nominations for our next meeting. But I'm happy that we've got both Jeff and Jill's commitment, if council is open to considering those this evening. And then for the Planning Commission, it's a three-year commitment. I am thrilled that Commissioner Gerard and former City Councilmember Paul Gerard has agreed to stay on the Planning Commission. And he may be hesitant to a full three-year commitment, but is open to that as its current state. And then also, our existing and returning commissioners, Kubal and Brink, have also recommitted. We do have one open seat available. I do have two active interested candidates. So I expect that I'll have that position in a recommendation for you in our next council meeting. But again, I wanted to get actually approved tonight, what was known and settled. And so for that, I would submit the slate of two commission candidates for the EDA and the three candidates for the Planning Commission. I'm open to feedback, questions, anything council may have.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the proposed commission appointments, realizing that we have two open seats on the EDA and one open seat on the Planning Commission.
Fabulous, there is a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. And I, just in discussion, many of you have brought a number of candidates forward, and I just really appreciate that. It's great to have interest and a lot of enthusiasm in these seats, and look forward to getting everyone seated here probably in our next, by our next meeting. So with that, with the motion made, and no further discussion, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and a motion carries. All right, we do not have any planned discussion items or workshop items this evening. I do know that just in seating of new council and the turning of the calendar for a new year, we will start having a number of workshop sessions, starting with next week's workshop, just on background of kind of great opportunity to revisit our strategic plan, specific work plan items by department coming up for this upcoming year. And so look for us to start that process in our next workshop session. And then we will be adding kind of workshop discussion topics into regular agendas as we need, just as we make sure we've kind of start off this first year on a strong foot. And just again, start with, start with some strong plans. So with that, let's move to staff updates, and then we'll do mayor and council updates after that. And we'll start with you, Karen, any updates this evening?
I do have a couple of updates, Mayor, thank you. I did send out earlier this evening an email to council members regarding the Board of Appeal and Equalization meeting. I do now have a date, a tentative date for that from the county. They're looking at Monday, April 10th, beginning at 5:30. I know it's a little early to be thinking about that. But the reason for the email has to do with training. By statute, we are required to have at least one council member trained for that. The county prefers that we have at least two. So within that email, you'll find a link, you can go do the training online, really easy, and then you're trying to do that meeting. Now, last year, we had a significant number of people that turned up to that Board of Appeals meeting, and all the council members were present there. So it's helpful to understand and know what's going on. So I highly recommend all the council members doing that training. The second email that I sent out was to the new council members for the elected official training. So you should have received that email, or if you haven't, take a look. There is elected official training through the League of Minnesota Cities. If you have any questions, just let me know. But there's dates provided in there, and I believe the city does compensate you for just that one training. I think you pay for it, and then we reimburse you for that. So if you have questions, let me know, and I can direct you to where you need to go for that as well. That was all.
I would just reiterate, both the training sessions, the league training just does a great job, and it's a good opportunity to just meet a lot of elected officials from other cities and kind of start to build that cohort network, which is always valuable. And then the Board of Appeals training really specifically relates to the property taxes process that we will have in, is it April we hold that meeting? And in that meeting, it's one of the few times where as council members, we are interacting directly with the public. And so the format of that meeting is you are paired, or council members are paired, with a member of the county assessor's office, and they lead kind of that side of the conversation. But the resident is really looking for us to fill our role, us being kind of their representative in that meeting. And the training just does a great job of teeing you up for that experience. Because again, it's one of the few times where we're kind of interacting in our official capacity in an official meeting directly with residents, and that training just does a good job. It's pretty well laid out. The process can be less than intuitive, and the training just does a good job of breaking that down as to what the process is. So just a few plugs for, for that, and we're required. And can, do you know if we have our existing, if those who are currently trained are expired?
I don't know, I can look it up.
Can you look if any of us are expired?
I think you and Hannah are trained.
Yeah, Maro, I looked it up. We, I don't remember when our terms end for that, or when, when we need to re-up it, but you and I should be good for this year. I think it's for four years.
I think it's every two years, you have to do it. Every two years, you have to do it. I would also mention too, just back to the election official training. There is advanced training that the League of Minnesota Cities offers for more seasoned council members. So if that is of interest, email me and let me know.
That's also a good session, okay. Thank you, Karen. Dan?
Mayor, members of the council, we're about nine days away from the new website being launched. They'll go in next Wednesday afternoon, spend the afternoon basically turning on the new design that we have. Staff is currently right now working through some minor content changes, and there will be some additional changes once the site goes live. But I am going in there right now and taking a look at what the new layouts look like. Bear in mind, if you look at the site now, it was very image-driven before, and we've sort of reduced that specifically for the mobile platforms. We kind of made this as a mobile focus because our analytics are showing right around 60% are coming in on a mobile platform. So you gotta make concessions when you're using web design, but that new product will come out next Wednesday. And then we'll make some additional tweaks on that. So you're sitting around next Wednesday looking for something to do, take a look at the new site late at night. The scenes I've, the screenshots I've seen so far, I think it look, it's a very big improvement what we currently have.
Excellent, thank you, Dan.
A series of snowstorms and holidays and school closures and vacations have left me, not with updates for you guys for a while, and I apologize for that. Hoping that we'll get back into that routine. In fact, I just recognized I forgot to send out my weekly recap to Karen this morning. The last few weeks, I've had a couple of really good meetings with the chamber, starting to look at how the city and the chamber can better align its events, its programming, to just be a little bit more in tuned with one another. Been able to attend chamber ribbon cutting, so it's been really nice, including going to the New Yetter Home Store, which is a great addition to the community, you haven't been in there. Had a couple of meetings recently also with the Forest Lake Area School District in just talking about things like field scheduling, partnerships, hockey arena land and Fenway expansion. So really starting to explore some of those partnerships that we have out there. And then lastly, we should have that Park and Recreation Commission ordinance for you at your next regularly scheduled meeting in two weeks. Schedule that for a public hearing, anticipation of potentially seating those people even this month or early next month or, so.
Thank you. Patrick?
Just a few things, we've been communicating with the state and league municipalities regarding the legalization of marijuana and where that's going to go. Current legislation pretty much locks out local municipalities on any regulation or any taxes or anything. So that's not a great thing. Also, was with Abby, we met with the school district on those partnerships and so forth and so on. Also, we have been starting to re-up again our request for the bonding bills that we anticipate are going to come again. If the council, some of the members of council recall that two years ago, we submitted a $5.7 million request to the legislature for a regional stormwater pond. And as also most of you know, the council last year adjourned without any action on any bonding bill. So we're not sure if they're going to have to resubmit that, or they'll take what we've submitted. And we will be looking for other submissions as well this year to see, see if they can get approved. There's quite a bit of a surplus that everybody has been aware of. And hopefully, the legislature will do the right thing and let loose some of that money. That'd be great. I would like to congratulate the council for, for being seated tonight. Look forward to the next year and working with you all again. And for the new members, just to tell you, you get a weekly report, either on Monday or Tuesdays of each week on what the past week's activities were. Most of the weeks you'll get that, you know, Christmas weeks, you probably won't get it, or some of the holiday weeks you may not. But usually, they come out weekly. We've, we've changed that and updated it, and so you'll, you'll get the, it's a departmental report. So look forward to that into your email accounts. That's all I have.
Thank you, Patrick.
I just want to say congratulations to the new members, and I look forward to working with you, and I'm available for questions.
Dave?
No updates tonight.
Ryan?
Mayor, City Council, I just want to highlight that, to make sure it's on your agenda, February 24th, County State Aid Highway 32 or 11th Avenue from Highway 61 to basically the overpass bridge. We do have a public open house planned with Washington County upstairs at 4:30 PM through 6:30 PM. So February 24th, this will be the first time this project goes public too. So it'll be good that if you guys could attend that and be there for any questions or just even hear what the property owners and business owners all might have to say in regards to this project, because this is a very tight corridor, and there's a lot of safety issues through this corridor. And there's zero pedestrian facilities currently, and there's just some old infrastructure in there. And stormwater management's going to be difficult to achieve. So this is going to be probably one of our most difficult cooperative agreement projects that we have between Washington County and Mid-Its. And I don't really have a voice because we had a basketball tournament this weekend.
Well done. To make you speak longer, did you say Friday, is it Friday the 24th? Friday, February 24th?
It's a Friday.
Oh, yeah.
Is it a Friday?
No, it should be a Monday. What was I looking at? Yep, Monday, February 27th.
Monday, February 27th, and what time?
4:30 PM. And then?
And here in the community room, right?
Up in the community room, and that was the night we planned on not having an EDA meeting. So just a follow over, and right after that, we'd have our regular city council meeting at 7:00 PM.
Perfect, thank you. And Chief Newman?
Mayor, members of the council have one update. On January 2nd, we had four new firefighters start, Ted LaFlash, Cor Maculla, Tim Engel, and Jackie Tweet. I'd like to welcome them to the Fire Department, and this is the first time that we've been fully staffed since 2014.
Nice, well done. A lot of recruiting effort goes into that, so let's keep the retention, right?
Absolutely.
Keep everyone healthy, fabulous. And Kim?
Mayor, Bane and City Council Members, as you know, we approved the hiring of Angela Campbell for the administrative assistance, and today was her first day, so things are looking up. We are finally fully staffed. I want to publicly thank our part-time gal, Barb Gibson, who came out of retirement to have helped our office a couple of times, so I'm really grateful for her. She's been a really big help for our department, so want to publicly thank her. Also, Dave's crew went out and did a quarterly read on December 29th. Very excited, it may be just the little things, but when I first started there, came back after the reads, and there was over 600 errors, and they came back with only nine. And seven of them, seven of them were because we need new meter read, or new meters installed at the locations. So very excited about that. We started the quarterly, fourth quarter billing process, and we actually will have it finalized tomorrow. So I'll send the file to the print vendor, and so the residents should be receiving their utility billing for the fourth quarter sometime at the end of the week, if not the beginning of next week. If you have any questions, feel free to answer.
What do we get to attribute the, think the reduction in errors? Like what was causing the errors, or what's, what are we, what's different now that's?
Dave's crew's been extremely helpful in their documentation and our documentation to make sure that meter IDs have been correctly inputted. We have the information and stuff correct. One, one digit off can really cause some problems. We also have determined and stuff with just the, the loading and the uploading, importing and exporting of the files of our data, and stuff goes a little bit smoother too. We have to download it from our system, upload it into his, and vice versa. And so we've been really trying to make sure and stuff that we have followed that process to a T, so we can catch things before they're actually onto our flash, flash disk for them. So, and they've been just wonderful help, so I thank Dave for that also.
Yeah, it's been really the people involved in this one, the public works and finance people to straighten out utility billing system that's been long, needed to be straightened out.
Yeah, excellent, very good. Thank you for the update. And Kevin?
Kim covered it all for me, so no further updates from finance.
Excellent, very good. All right, with that, let's bring updates to council, and we'll start with Councilmember Roberts.
I'd just like to thank everyone. I've had the opportunity to meet with some department heads and other staff, and I appreciate everyone taking that time, and looking forward to working with everyone going forward.
Councilmember Valento?
Just to put it on everyone's radar, for the Rotary, they're having their winter plunge in February, which is on a Saturday, the 18th. Hopefully, this year, we can get more council members to jump, maybe the newbies, I don't know. That would be great. So that's my only update. I'll be jumping, I jumped last year.
Are you jumping too?
I survived.
Excellent. Councilmember Husnick?
Oh, I, earlier, I, we talked about the airport stuff, and I attended that meeting, and we covered a couple of different things. But just one thing I wanted to add is that we've already started the process of discussion about, for the open house in August. Last year, there was a, some lack of communication, and we just got to do a better job. So we started that process early this year, so that's all I have.
Very good, and Councilmember Erickson?
Yeah, I just want to thank the staff. I've had a chance to meet several of you all since the election, and just getting to get into, up to speed on what's going on. So really excited what's to come, and I look forward to getting to know the rest of you even more in the months ahead.
Excellent, very good. Just again, welcome to Councilmember Roberts and Councilmember Erickson, looking forward to working together. I've had a couple of state elected officials reach out, kind of looking for what are, A, want, just when I do an introduction, which is always lovely, but ultimately, because we're now in session, also looking for some legislative agendas. If we could come up with kind of the, the list of our ask, I always can think of things in those discussions, but I'm not sure we've formalized that, or also had kind of a conversation with council on what that a legislative agenda should be. Certainly, things like, you know, our input related to marijuana. I know, Patrick, your update just said that, you know, cities are not being very considered in that process, but certainly, we can provide some feedback that that maybe.
They're not being included at all.
Yeah, right. And then also, you know, bonding bill always comes to mind, infrastructure. There's just a host of things that I know is on all of our minds, but having kind of the specifics so that as we're having conversations with the various elected officials, we can just be consistent, make sure we're hitting on everything, so. And then the, as I was putting together boards, commissions, a couple of things come to mind. And I think we still might have on our official committee list some boards that maybe we should kind of consider what's next. I think we still have an official flaw liaison position identified. And I know with the consideration of the new format, we should just make sure we're crisp with flaw on what is that expectation. Are we still appointing somebody to be on their board? We can still do that, if that is still the, the request. Or I think the question is out there as to whether or not their new structure is going to provide that level of interaction. And if that checks the box, then let's just cover it once. So there's just a little bit of administrative cleanup to do. Also, to the extent that if we still have the finance committee identified as an official committee, we should take whatever action to pull that back. In the finance committee, I don't think has been active in at least the last six years. And in our new budget process, or the budget process we've had for the last several years, it is, it's not needed because the process we've typically taken is that all council participates in all of those budget workshops. Previously, the finance committee kind of did a, an initial review of the budget, and the, and we just haven't had that structure. And since we aren't using it, we should probably pull it off. Whatever it needs to, whatever we need to do to administratively not have this conversation every year. Finance is incredibly important, and I just don't want to give the impression that we aren't doing anything with finance. Rushline Corridor, I think, is also still on our administrative list. Should probably clean that up as well. I believe when the transition happened between the Rushline and the Met Council, I think that Rushline Corridor has officially disbanded, but we should, we should cover our, ourselves. And then we need to just finally figure out what we're going to do with the Human Rights Commission. I believe our ordinance. I believe our ordinance still indicates we have a Human Rights Commission. It has been inactive for many, many years. Personally, I think we should have a workshop conversation to talk about what's currently happening in the community on this topic. I think it begs the question of what's the role for the city? And I think the role for the city is something much different than what is in our current code around the Human Rights Commission, which is why it's been inactive. But we should probably stop kicking that candle on the road and kind of do what we need to do to...
Sure.
At least recognize what is currently happening and just be consistent. So just some cleanup items I noted, nothing incredibly time pressing, but as we're kind of working through items in the next couple of months, we should clean up those things so we don't have to have this conversation every day anyway. With that, that is the end of my update.
So it was referenced the change on the Parks, Lakes, and Trail flaw. Is there any way to get an update for some newer people to get brought to speed as to where that's at? Not, doesn't that be now, but via email or something, you know?
No, we will, and we'll bring it back to council if we want to put it as discussions again. We can do that, just to catch everybody up, but we will have a draft ordinance shortly as well.
There was a tentative ordinance or kind of an initial draft that was presented at the last council meeting of the year. And council provided feedback to that, but before approving, we wanted to give opportunity for, you know, certainly input from new council. And then there was some feedback items that staff was asked to take a look at. So maybe we bring that back, if it's coming back to us. Abby, could you just get a current version out?
Yeah, so what I can do is I can send out that former version that has been circulated already. Next week, we have our workshop. I can definitely address during the workshop.
Let's workshop it. Let's add it to the workshop agenda.
We're having, I mean, if you want it as its own separate item, that's fine, but we've been asked from Patrick to just kind of give state of the department, and I can include it in that. And then in two weeks, we'll have that scheduled hearing on the new ordinance. The new ordinance should be released, I think, this Friday, any, by this Friday, and so after that, I can release it publicly. We just have a few little tweaks left to do on it, so.
I guess I would also say, as you look at that, and if Monday, there's, if we need to carve out more specific agenda time to specifically talk about things, because it is an ordinance change, it's, you know, kind of coming back before us in two weeks, but we have some time to make updates. Or if it's not ready to come back to us, that would be good feedback as well. So let me know what you need for time. Okay. Any other updates or items? All right, that being the end of our agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion. Is there a second? Motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? And we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.